... 9 o'clock, meeting start.
Thank you. Can I open it? (laughing). Welcome, everyone, and thank you for coming to the special Sparks City Council meeting of 11:10, 2014. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
For the last time, here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Driscoll.
Here.
City attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, moving along, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Obviously, Mr. Kerrigan, would you lead us?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is 4.1, canvass the votes and declare the results of the 2014 general election. Go ahead.
The 2014 general election was held Tuesday, November 4th, 2014, and the city council must canvass the votes and declare the results within 10 days of the election per City Charter Section 5.100. The city's first election information is as follows: total voter registration, 45,633; total turnout, 22,727; early voters, 10,319; absentee voters, 1913; election day voters, The unofficial summary report from Marshall County is attached. For mayor, we had Mayor, we had Gino Martini, 16,781 votes cast, 78.27 percent of the voters. We had Gene Newhall, 4,658 votes cast, 21.73 percent of the voters. For council ward two, we had Ed Lawson, 12,100 votes cast, 63.94 percent of the voters. Ed Goodrich had 6,823 votes cast, 36.06 percent of the voters. For council ward four, we had Charlene Bybee, 11,616 votes cast, for 58.15 percent of the voters, and Christopher Dyer, for 8,361 votes cast, 41.85 percent of the voters. Municipal judge, Department One, Barbara McCarthy, 18,307 votes cast, 100 percent of the voters. I move...
Okay, now we can, is that it?
I do.
Okay. So now we're looking for a motion to declare the results of the 2014 general election. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. I'd like to take a motion to declare the official results for the City of Sparks elections for 2014.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve and declare the results of the 2014 general election. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote, or please vote, even if you're not in favor. Passage unanimously, thank God everybody's in favor, that's a good deal. Okay. All right, seeing no further business on this particular agenda, we're going to adjourn now and have everybody sworn in, the new officers. So we'll do that very shortly, but right now, we're adjourned for this meeting, and then we'll have everybody sworn in. Mr. Spoo, I believe, is here, Judge Spoo. And then we will move on to the second meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Who do you want us? Yeah.
We're going to do them sequentially, Mr. Mayor's person.
Are you going to do them, or are you going to put me on the spot?
It's in terms of age. Is age and weight? Mr. Mayor, are you ready to take the oath?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, please, repeat after me. I...
I, Gino Martini.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government...
Constitution and government.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and government...
And the Constitution and government.
The state of Nevada...
Of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty...
Allegiance and loyalty.
To the same...
To the same.
Any ordinance...
Any ordinance.
Resolution or law...
Resolution or law.
Of any state...
Of any state.
Notwithstanding...
Notwithstanding.
And that I will well...
And that I will well.
And faithfully...
And faithfully.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of...
Of the office of Mayor of Sparks.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I...
I, Barbara McCarthy.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the state of Nevada...
And the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Whether foreign or domestic...
Whether foreign or domestic.
And that I will well...
And that I will well.
Pardon me. And that I will bear...
And that I will bear.
Truth...
True.
Allegiance and loyalty...
Allegiance and loyalty.
To the same...
To the same.
Any ordinance...
Any ordinance.
Resolution or law...
Resolution or law.
Of any state notwithstanding...
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will well...
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform...
And faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office...
All the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Council member Lawson, council member elect Ratty, are you ready to take the oath?
Yes.
If you wish to follow along. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I...
I, Ed Lawson.
Charlene Bybee.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the state of Nevada...
And the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Whether foreign or domestic...
Whether foreign or domestic.
And that I will bear truth, allegiance...
And that I will bear truth, allegiance.
And loyalty...
And loyalty.
To the same...
To the same.
Any ordinance, resolution...
Any ordinance, resolution.
Or law of any state...
Or law of any state.
Notwithstanding...
Notwithstanding.
And that I will well...
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform...
And faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office of...
All the duties of the office of Sparks City Council.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, those just got sworn in, there's an oath that you need to sign, and then Judge Spoo needs to sign them also, so. First, that you ask me. (inaudible) 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 Now, those just got sworn in, there's an oath that you need to sign, and then Judge Spoo needs to sign them also, so. First, that you ask me. (inaudible) 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 Sure. Anybody have a, go ahead, man, if you've got a statement to make.
Well, I've seen my wife is walking out the door right now.[581.04][581.04](laughing). I have to act fast around here, she's busy. I want to say thank you to my lovely wife, Diane, without your support and help, obviously I can't do this and carry on another job at the same time. And my brother's here also, who's always been in my corner, Rick Lawson. Thank you very much for being a great brother. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, and I'm very proud, too, to have my daughter, Gina, and my grandson, Elio. There you go.[619.16][619.16](laughing). (inaudible)
I'd like to thank my family.
Do I need to hit something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
There you go, please. I'll get checked out on all of this. Thank you all for being here today. Have to thank personally my family, my team, my husband, who's my sign guy and top supporter, my mom and dad, their friend Jan, one of my fellow flood attorneys, Patty, who came today, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, but the whole team of people who supported me, and mostly to the city, the voters here in the City of Sparks who put their faith in me to represent them. I'm looking forward to this great experience. I have an incredible team to work with here, fellow council members and the mayor, and an incredible city staff. I feel like I'm in good hands. Thank you.
That's right, Charlene, you've got to have a sign guy up here in politics. Thank God for families, huh?
I'm listening, Jim.
Yeah, go ahead, sign that, then Jim will sign it. Welcome aboard, you've been elected a week and you're ready to go already, that's great.
Thank you.
A lot of people like the county and all those assembly people and senators, they get months to get ready, but when you're doing the people's work in the cities, you get right to work. So here we go. I'd like to call over to the Sparks City Council meeting of November 10th, 2014, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Driscoll.
Here.
City attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you all stand for the invocation speaker, Pastor Barbara West from the Sparks Church of the Nazarene. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor, what a privilege to be here on this special day. Would you all bow your heads and pray with me, please? Lord, what a privilege it is to be here and witness this fine group of people sworn in. Thank you for Judge Smith to be here to officiate. And Father, there are so many things that we have to be thankful for at this time of year. Elections, when we, the people, can cast our vote, we're thankful, too, for our servicemen and women who so gallantly serve us all over the world, and those who are here in Sparks. We thank you for our first responders and our policemen and our firefighters and our EMT people. Just so many things to be thankful for. And Lord, we are thankful for Mayor Martini and this great group of city council people that will lead us, and we entrust them into your care and ask for your wisdom to be theirs as they lead us into the future, one day at a time. Bless them and us in this Thanksgiving season, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor West, for those kind words, I appreciate it. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Bybee, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment, anyone want to speak in a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to number five, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? I would like to move 9.1, general business, move it under 7.3, the tribute to Councilman Kerrigan. If somebody could make a motion with that amendment, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I'm making a motion with the agenda outline. With the exception of moving 9.1 up to, you wanted the top of the agenda?
That's 9, 743, yeah, right up to 73. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Very good. One down. (laughing). Okay, approval of the minutes, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the council workshop for October 20th, 2014, and the regular Sparks City Council meeting of October 27th, 2014. Any omissions or deletions? If not, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the minutes of the October council workshop, 20th of October, and the October 27th, 2014 meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pastor Janice Lee, thank you. Announcements and presentations, proclamation, child and teen grief awareness day, is someone here to accept this? Okay, well, I'll go ahead and read it anyway. Proclamation from the City of Sparks, whereas the City of Sparks recognizes that one out of 20 children will experience the death of a parent before they graduate from high school, while one out of every seven children will face the death of someone close to them. And whereas many people don't realize it takes most children much longer to deal with their grief than we expect, and that the amount of their inner turmoil, invisible to most, is much more intense than we have any idea of. And whereas even if there aren't any outward signs of inner turmoil, those storms can still be raging inside a grieving child's heart. And whereas the Solist Tree believes that all children, teens and their family, family members, should have the freedom to express their feelings associated with death in a safe and loving environment. And whereas the City of Sparks and Solist Tree want to help people learn ways that might help a grieving child they happen to know now or in the future. Now, therefore, I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2014, as Child and Teen Grief Awareness Day. Thank you. (applause). Okay, let's move on to 7.2, proclamation, Councilman Mike Kerrigan, is Mr. Kerrigan here?
Is anybody here to accept this?
Front and center there, big boy. Yeah, is there anybody here to accept this?
No.
(laughing). Just think how they feel out there with you up here. Whereas Councilman Mike Kerrigan has served the City of Sparks devotedly, representing Ward Four since 1999. And whereas, as a longtime resident of the City of Sparks, Nevada, Councilman Kerrigan has dedicated his life to improving his city. And whereas a former naval aviator, Councilman Kerrigan served and protected his nation for 24 years. And whereas a graduate of the University of Nevada Reno and former journalism instructor, Councilman Kerrigan inspired a younger generation to strive for excellence in writing and reporting. And whereas Councilman Kerrigan has served for more than 15 years on the Sparks City Council, serving on important boards and commissions such as the Trucky Meadows Water Authority, Western Regional Water Commission, Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, Regional Planning and Governing Board, and also serving as chairman of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency and mayor pro tempore. And whereas Councilman Kerrigan has been a champion on regional water issues, serving as the chairman of the board of the Trucky Meadows Water Authority since 2005. And whereas Councilman Kerrigan's hard work, commitment, and dedication to the City of Sparks can be seen throughout his tenure with the city and will never be forgotten, we thank Councilman Mike Kerrigan for everything he's done to help make the City of Sparks the special place it is today. Now, therefore, I, Gino, our Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 10th, 2014, as Councilman Mike Kerrigan Day. (applause).
Does anybody want to hear anything from me?
Not yet.
Oh.
Your time is coming.
Thanks, Julia, you're always keeping me in my place.
Okay, we have some things for you, Michael, going away, presents and things, let me look up here, where's, where's Mayberry at? Which one's first? Oh, okay. Okay, we've got some presentations, but first of all, we have a video in memory of Mike Kerrigan, so.
I'm not sure I see it.
Sure you do.
Bloopers.
He's really playful, he's funny, he's very intelligent, he's fun to be with, he will see this book, hold it in his face, and look at her, and say, "Now, let's make sure I got this right."
You always told me exactly where you spent all the things, and I always got the message, it was Kerrigan. You know, Chief Garrison, am I making myself perfectly clear? And I will say...
He's just a funny guy, but he's really fun to be with, he's intelligent.
One of the first times that we actually sat down and talked, I was trying to be appointed to the city council in 1999, and you came over to my office and very basically took a credit in it, and you were there to interview me, and you talked to me about being the city councilman, so. You know, I thought maybe you'd asked why I wanted to be a city councilman, or I thought I was, could handle the job, but, no, but the first question out of your mouth to me was, "Do you owe anybody anything?"
He was sweet, he was kind, he was a great dancer, he was a major journalist, and he has a special quality, quite remarkably, which is, I was expecting from a senior day is that she's able to enjoy something that is made in the character of one. One of the things that I most appreciate about Councilman Kerrigan is that there are three people on the list between him and I.
This book says, "Man, you'd be very in a couple from 100-year-old, from a seat in Afghanistan, so much." I enjoyed our lessons with you, and talk about issues that live in the city, I also enjoyed your reports on the Army Navy Games. You know, I don't really admire Mike Kerrigan, although I learned a lot from him, and I taught him in his next life. Don't be so passionate, because you did have no passion in workshops, and you needed to step it up a little bit, because you were pretty old in those things, Mike. Mike, congratulations, it's been a great experience, working with you over the years, I admire your work as a councilman, all the various things you said on it. And for me, I appreciate you, I could always see you. And we've been on the same side on it, thanks, but we've been opposite on this, and we've had great conversations and heated moments, but those are the things that make our democracy and elected officials so important, is that we have passion about what we do. I always rather be just something witty and just something kind of humorous, and as I sit here and ponder, none of those things are ever mine. Congratulations on your forced retirement, and obviously, the term looks up every good and bad.
I think one of the things I most disminuted for term on this is that, I think in these last couple years, you've really shown some great personal intelligence, and I'm out of the closet in terms of being willing to admit publicly over and over again, but you agree with me, and right on, brother, I can have one of these, so, seriously, I really miss you.
The ability to pick it up and write it in the mind, about you and your nature, and also for your journalism, from that standpoint, I've drawn a lot from that.
But I admire also how you, as your honesty, and what you fought for while you were on council. The next thing I knew, the door threw open the backseat, and this guy jumped in and put his arm around me, and cried. That's disgusting. I would probably have to say something right back to me, and he kind of saw the look on my face, and jumped out of the car, and I'm like, "Hey." The following week, there was a dance at my prep school, and Eva's mother called me and said, "John wants you to come to the dance." And I said, "Oh, boy, you finally noticed me." So I went out, and I was Mike's date, and they set it up, and nobody told me, and I was really upset, until I found out he was from California, and I figured he knew the choice personally.
And then I won an appointment with an naval one, I mean, I won United States Navy, and I moved in 1973, and when my wings go in 1974, I was a solid Air Force, and I was going, I was very, very tired, and I still dress my career in a cockpit, flying probably about 13 different types of airplanes.
And it's been, wow, it's been a while by, it's been great, we've lived all over the world, we've had two daughters together, one who's just getting ready to get married soon, and our audiolaters in the Navy, and we're all very proud of Mike.
If you were to hang your hat on two or three real key items, since you've been on city council, you're part of the most, those are the things we do every day that, you know, people don't realize, and it's like, "Oh, we might have missed this for a year," and that sounds really frightening, but people out here that live there, they thought that was a good thing, and it took nine years, and that's how slow the wheels of the government worked, but it took nine years of me really tripping in people's ears about, "Hey, we need that wagon," and finally, after nine years, it's a happy career, I got a PC, and this is a great facility out here, so, I mean, he buys a water company, he's the best engineer we've ever had, because now our fate's in our own hands, and citizens and all, we're all owners of the water.
That sounds really frightening, but people out here that live there, they thought that was the spirit of the city. And it took nine years, I mean, that's how slow the wheels of government work, but it took nine years of me really tripping in people's ears about, "Hey, we need that water now." And finally, after nine years, it's a happy career, I mean, I can see it, this is a great facility out here. So, I mean, he buys a water company, he's the best thing that we've ever done, because now our fate's in our own hands, and citizens, and all of us, we're all owners of the water company.
"You'll come to my country many times, I only invite you once." Then you'll come to my country, and you'll be Sean now. And a big daddy, you know, a big daddy.
Now, Mike, there's a couple of us that are laughing more than others on the last deal there with Sean. Could you give us a brief description of what was going through your mind there?
Well, first of all, I want to say, can I use that when I die? That is like a great, you know, a great thing to say at somebody's funeral. For those of you that want to figure out why Sean Carey was smoking a cigarette backwards and had a Mao hat on, when we went to China, we went down to Mao country, and we were talking to the head communist guy, and he looked at me and he said, "Have you ever been to China before?" And I said, "Yeah, a couple of times, but I wasn't invited." And that's where that came from.
How about smoking the cigarette backwards?
Well, when you're a naval aviator, you have to go to SERE school, and at the time that I went to SERE school, Vietnam was going hot and heavy, so you had to go in there, and they would capture you and treat you like a prisoner of war, and all the bad guys would smoke their cigarettes continental style and have the accent, and I always go, "Mr. Kettigan." And so whenever I see anybody smoke a cigarette backwards, it freaks me out. And the first thing we did, when we hit China, the first guy that was talking to lights up a cigarette starts smoking it backwards. And so I told Gino and John, I said, "Protect me from the communists, please."
You know, that was a great trip, and I want everybody to realize this, do a visual of three full-figured guys, Sean Carey, Mike Carrigan, and myself, in a Chinese taxi cab that was about as big as a Fiat Cinquecento, right? With our Mao hats on, and the cab driver was playing...
Chinese rap.
Chinese rap music. Now, that was a sight for, to behold, really, I want to tell you. All right, Mike, we have a few other presentations to make. Ashley, I think you have something?
Apparently, I can't work a microphone. Thank you, Adam, for making me cry, as you... So I'm sure you know there's no crying in the Carrigan household. I do have a presentation, but I just want to say, Charlene, congratulations, congratulations to everyone. It's bizarre, actually, to see your name and not my dad's, but I've seen it for 15 years up there, but congratulations, I'm glad to see another woman on the council, so power to the people. But anyway, I just, I had a letter, I don't want to read it, because I might start crying, but I just, I want to thank you as a lifelong resident of Sparks, I don't live in South Reno, but don't hold that against me. You've been a tremendous asset to the city and to the citizens, so thank you for your leadership, your dedication, your hard work, and I hope to see more of you now that you're retired, though I don't think that's true, so. But on behalf of my boss, Senator Heller, who is sorry he could not be here today, we do have a certificate of senatorial recognition to you, and I'd also like to present to you a flag that was flown over the Capitol on your behalf, so.
You know, Ashley, even though Mike not holding against you for living in South Reno, I do. Okay, and then from Senator Heller Reed, I have a letter I'd like to read you real quick. Dear Councilman Carrigan, I would like to thank you for your 24 years of service with the United States Navy and for your leadership with the Sparks City Council. Your dedication to public service has resulted in numerous accomplishments throughout the Truckee Meadows in which we can all take great pride. Although your departure will be a loss, I am pleased you will be able to pursue your well-earned retirement. Sincerely, Herr Reed, United States Senator. I also have a sealed envelope from Congressman Mark Amade, which I'm not going to open and read, because I don't know what it says.
You know, I'm not sure what it says either, so maybe we should keep that one for later on. Yeah, wait a minute, would you like to open it for me, make sure there isn't any explosive device in it?
Then, of course, we have the video here for you. And then I have a proclamation from the governor. Whereas Michael Carrigan, an Annapolis, Maryland Naval Academy graduate, who earned his wings of gold in 1974 and retired from the United States Navy as an aviator with 24 years of service to our nation. And whereas Michael Carrigan has served on the Board of Directors for the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, the Western Nevada Water Commission, Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, the Regional Planning and Governing Board, and the Oversight Committee for the School Facilities, I know that's one of your favorites, Mike. Whereas Michael Carrigan has served his community in the capacity of council member for Ward Four since 1999, is now retiring from his historic tenure on the Sparks City Council. And whereas Michael Carrigan and the council on which he serves has been an integral component behind the growth, stabilization, and economic development within the Sparks community. And whereas Michael Carrigan's personal and professional history has earned him the thanks of the citizens of Sparks, the state of Nevada, the United States of America, and his service to its citizens. Now therefore, Brian Sandoval, Governor of the State of Nevada, does hereby proclaim November 10th, 2014, as a day in honor of Michael Carrigan. Okay, moving right along, have a letter from the Nevada League of Cities and an unopened, again, I didn't want to go there. "Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm afraid I cannot attend your meeting today, but wanted to express the League's appreciation to your public service. There is no group of people that I respect more than those that are willing to place their names on a ballot in order to serve the residents of their city and suffer slings and arrows that come with the job. I and the League believe you are public deserves recognition. Councilman Carrigan, please accept this small token of gratitude from your colleagues at the Nevada League of Cities and municipalities to you, sir, and your public service. Signed, Wes Henderson, Executive Director." And then the last thing on the list is a City of Sparks flag that was flown over the city, so we'd like to personally give this to you.
Keep it brief.
Keep it brief. That's Julia, thank you, Julia. You know, seriously, I'm overwhelmed. I really didn't expect anything like this, and I'm trying to keep it together. But it's tough when you see my wife and daughter over there. Just a lot of thank yous that I need to do. I want to thank the citizens of Sparks for having me trust and faith in me to reelect me four times to the City Council. I'm very proud to have served the citizens. It's a great city, and we moved here by choice. I wasn't born here, but we moved here by choice, and it was the best choice we've ever made. I'd like to also thank the staff. You know, they're the ones that keep you informed, and Charlene, you're going to realize this, they do it in such a manner that it's unbiased, concise, and you can really make some good decisions, so I want to thank the staff for that. I want to thank the mayor and the city council. It's been a lot of fun working with all of you. And, you know, we've had our ups and downs and arguments, and we've screamed at each other, but the one thing that I know for a fact is we always have held the needs of the city above our needs, and I've been very proud to serve with all of you. And Julia is absolutely right, it's a good thing there were three of you between her and I, but she taught me a lot, and I really respect her for that. I mean, I'm a hardcore Republican, I got to admit, she's a hardcore Democrat, and she has taught me a lot in the years that she's been on the City Council, and I appreciate it. And she's a smart person, and she's always been forthright with me, and I really appreciate that. And lastly, I'd really want to thank my wife, Cora, who's in the audience, and my daughter, Ashley, and my daughter Molly, who couldn't be here because she's in the Navy, she just made lieutenant, so I'm proud of that. You know, Ashley plays down the fact that she is the state director for Dean Heller, who is in the majority now, so a little bit more important job for Dean down the road. They've been with me through thick and thin, and, you know, they've supported me through some crazy stuff that I wanted to do, you know, being in the Navy was crazy, I moved them all over the world, and then being in politics is probably even crazier. And they've been behind me 100%, and I'll never, I will never forget that. And it has been my pleasure to serve the citizens of Sparks, and I will never forget this, it's been a great adventure. So thank you so much.
You know, I apologize, I got one more, somebody that wanted to say so, I apologize, Trey, come on up, please.
I won't drag this out, but for the record, Trey Adney with the Chamber of Reno Sparks in Northern Nevada, and first of all, welcome Councilwoman Byby, we look forward to working with you. It's nice to finally see a friendly face in that chair, so we appreciate that. Mike, on behalf of the 2,000 members of the Chamber of Commerce, we want to thank you very much for your service to this city. I haven't been here that long, this is the only council I've ever known with one with you on it, and it's been a pleasure working for you, you know, much to your happiness, I don't have to come over here that much. I get to, let's just say, your colleagues in the other local governments can make things a little bit more difficult than the new folks out here in Sparks, and you have a great staff, you have a council that has been very good for economic vitality, and you have been a big part of that, along with the mayor and the other folks sitting in front of us. Thank you for welcoming me and my family into your home. I was mostly there to talk with Cora and Molly and Ashley, but the fact that you were there was okay, too. But thank you for your service, thank you for your friendship, and I look forward to your friendship for years to come. Thank you very much.
Okay, last but not least, comments from the council, anybody want to say anything? Mr. Lawson?
Well, I didn't know what I'm going to miss is the Colorado State Navy updates. I love that. By the way, Colorado State is nine and one, so we're looking pretty good. Mike, you've been a great mentor in this, my first stint here at the council, and I did enjoy our lunches when I could get your opinion on things, and you're very forthcoming on your opinions, and don't really shy away from giving them out, which I like, I like that a lot. I appreciate that in a lot of people. So you have that ability, but to do it in such a way that you don't feel intimidated or, you know, preached to, that's a real talent, and you have that talent. So I want to thank you for your guidance and your help, and I look forward to being your friend for many, many years to come.
I'm going to have to get a Harley now, huh?
That's right, I got an extra one.
Ron Smith?
You know, when I first got on the council, I started our two fights, and Mike and I were paired together for the last eight years. And I got a lesson from Mike at every one of those meetings, because Mike was never shy about seeing his feelings and the direction he wanted to go in, and so sometimes I looked at him and go, "Are you kidding me? Did you really say that?" But, yeah, he really did say that. But Mike, you've been great for me, and I appreciate everything, and I'm not so crazy about you agreeing with Julia all the time, but that's something we had to live with. So thank you for everything you've done for the city. Thank you.
Julia?
Well, first of all, I want to reassure you that in some of that interview footage, I really did say some nice things, and they apparently...
No, I don't want you to wreck it, don't say anything, I think that is the funniest thing, just leave a lie, I like that.
Well, for the benefit of the audience, you know, there was a time when I first got on the council, and maybe I didn't fit in so well, and there was a particularly tough budget vote that I pissed everybody off. And the only person who would say anything to me about it was Mike. And we went out to lunch, and we had about a three-hour lunch, where we both called each other a series of names that cannot be repeated here. And since that time, we have been solid, and there's just a tremendous amount of respect from me to you, so I want you to know that. I'm really going to miss you.
Ron Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mike, you and I have longest two, or we're the longest two serving, I remember the day I came on the council, you sat next to me and just went through everything with me to go ahead and tell me how things worked and the agendas and everything, and from that point, we've served on quite a few committees together between you and I, and we've had some words, and we've had a whole lot of good things, and I can tell you that I appreciate your honesty, I appreciate your support, whenever you said you were going to support an idea or something, I had, you were there for it. I appreciate it, and you will be missed, but I can't say that I think this side of the table is a lot brighter right now than it has been in the past, so thank you and good luck to you, whatever we can, if anything can help you out with, let me know. Thank you.
Ms. Byby?
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes, sir.
I've got some big shoes to fill, and marking neighborhoods had a lot of input from voters on how, what kind of job you did for them, representing all of us who live out in Ward Four, so I'm hoping I can fill those shoes. I'll call you if I'm stuck, I've got a great team here to work with me, but thank you for the many years that you put in overseeing and watching out for the city, and especially for those of us out in Ward Four. So wish you the best of luck, and hope I can do proud.
Charlene, I know you do a good job, I just want to warn you on one thing, and you saw it in the video, when I started that job, I had black hair, so I just want to let you know. It wears on you.
Yeah, well, when I started, I had hair. And sitting next to you for 15 years, you know, and I've never been on this council without Mike being there, so it's going to be, my wingman is gone, literally, so it should be a good run. I think we've had a good run, Mike, together, and when I talked about Mike coming and interviewing me and saying, "Do you owe anybody anything?", I was just taken aback, but I knew one thing, I knew one thing then, that Mike was a straight shooter, he was honest, truthful, a man of integrity, and you could always count on him in your corner, so that's what I'm going to miss the most. And I've got a gift from the City Council and City Manager for you, and this is from us personally, and please enjoy what's in here.
Can I get to take that without going to Carson City?
Sure.
You're very long in elected, so.
Oh, good. You could just go to jail.
If you did stick around for 9.1, there may be some other things you want to take with you.
Okay, let's move on to 9.1. Consideration, discussion, possible approval to recognize Councilman Mike Carrigan's service to the City of Sparks and granting to him the tools of his office. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Steve Frisco, City Manager, for the record. In the article before you, in recognition of Councilman Carrigan's dedication and the work that he's done on behalf of the people, we're petitioning the council to allow Mr. Carrigan to take the tools of his office with him upon his retirement. And so in the staff report, it talks about various things, everything from his stationery all the way up to his electronics. So with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm going to question like I was Mr. Carrigan, and Mr. Carrigan said, you know, I would be down there, so if we're defining tools of the trade, would you like to elaborate on that list at all, Mr. Carrigan, or you, that's a pretty broad term, I want to make sure...
I was getting ready to grab the chair of the Charlene sitting in, but I thought I'd leave it.
I just wanted to make sure if there's anything else besides that you would, we would not know that ahead of time, so thank you, but I'd be honored to make the motion if we're ready to...
Go ahead.
Move to congratulate Mr. Carrigan on a wonderful career and your retirement from the City of Council, and give him the tools of his trade that you may wish to retain.
Ms. Ratty?
Yes.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve agenda item 9.1 as outlined by staff, any further discussion? So you now please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks, Mike. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Ashley.
Okay, let's move on to consent items, 8.1 through 8.7. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.7.
You have a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.7. Any further discussion? So you now please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, moving on, 9.2, discussion and possible approval of resolution number 3269, a resolution in support of the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness. A joint initiative of joining forces, U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Is there someone here to make a presentation? Yeah, come on down. I knew I saw you guys, just didn't know where. Just come on down and give us your name for the record, and go ahead and make a little presentation.
Okay. You can sit in my lap.
Go ahead.
I want to thank you first for inviting us to speak on behalf of the issue of veterans' homelessness. My name is Tony Ramirez, I'm the Field Office Director for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Reno Field Office, and I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
My name is Elizabeth Pope, I supervise the healthcare for homeless veterans program at the Reno VA.
And I'm Peter Vogelmann, executive director of Captain Cherries, I'm also the Chair of RAW, which is Reno Area Alliance for the Homeless.
Thank you all.
And I welcome, again, I thank you all, and I think it's appropriate that... And I welcome, again, I thank you all, and I think it's appropriate, especially since Veterans Day is tomorrow, that we're discussing the issue of veterans homelessness. And the mayor's challenge has really started with a friendly competition between two mayors from Phoenix and Salt Lake City to basically eradicate chronic homeless veterans in their respective communities. I don't mean eradicate, but end homelessness in their communities. That initiative has spread across the nation, and basically it's a way to raise awareness of the issue of veterans homelessness, as well as try to marshal the resources that are available within the communities to address the issue. We have been fortunate through the federal government. There have been new resources appropriated through HUD and through the VA to address the issue. The community has active right now, I believe, about 217 BASH vouchers, which are vouchers that a veteran can use, he and his family can use to find housing, permanent housing in the community. And that's in conjunction with the services that the VA provides to help the families and the veterans stay in the homes, so to make sure that they're successful once they attain housing. Some of the strategies that are being incorporated are housing first, which is basically a strategy to, regardless of the issues that the veterans or his family are facing, whether that's alcohol or mental issues, to basically put them in a house and then wrap the services that the VA provides around them to, again, ensure their stability. Elizabeth, I'm not sure if you have anything else you would like to add.
Yeah, I just want to note that 20 of the vouchers that we have in HUD BASH are used here in Sparks. And we really appreciate, without the partnership that we've had with the Sparks Police Department and other local jurisdictions to do outreach on the river and under passes, and we wouldn't be able to identify the veterans that are in need of the services that we have to offer them. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And we, it is our goal to make sure that all the families and all the single veterans that need housing have access to those resources, because many of the veterans that are sleeping outside have served in combat, and being outside is not the best way to heal from a lot of the wounds that they carry. And so it is our, it's our honor to be able to provide the resources we have. And we can only do so, once again, with partnerships and collaborations with jurisdictions like the city of Sparks.
Thanks. Any questions? You know, I was impressed when Mr. Ramirez came and talked to me about this particular program. You know, there's a lot of things we do, a lot of programs, we talk about everything, but I really think this is something that's doable here. A lot of times, maybe we reach too far, but in this case, I think there's really something we can do here, and we can really do what this resolution is asking. So that's why I was so much behind it. I mean, it's a no-brainer to me. You know, we're not responsible for funding or any of that thing. You guys are taking care of that. You know, our police department is helping find the people that need to be assisted with these things. So I really think this is a great thing, and it's something we can actually do, and I'd love to see this happen. So, Mr. Smith.
You know, I want to thank you folks for the work you do. I think this time, in our age, where the veterans are getting more and more services for them, they never had them before. And it's tough to identify the people that really need them. Not only that, but in the workforce, I know they need jobs, and we've been asking folks to, if they have a job fair, to first talk to the veterans. If they're not qualified, they're not qualified. But again, the work you do is so valuable. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I move to approve resolution number 3269, a resolution in support of the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve resolution 3269. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, folks. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Pete. Let's move on to 9.3, consideration possible approval of the fire and police departments to purchase portable radios from Daily Wells Communication, Inc., and accessory equipment from other vendors in the total amount, combined amount of $444,703.70. Chief and chief.
You got us both today. Bonus, Mayor Martini, city council, for the record, Tom Garrison, fire chief. Joining me today is police chief, Brian Allen. Before you today is the consideration and possible approval for the fire and police departments to purchase portable radios from Daily Wells Communications Incorporated and accessory equipment from other vendors in the total combined amount of $447,703.70. To give you some background, in 2011, both the fire and police departments replaced their fleet of portable and mobile radios. The portable radio purchased was the best technology offered at that time, a Harris P-7270 model, and was marketed by a company as their first line public safety dual-band, which is a 700/800 megahertz radio. Another valuable feature was that the radio was software upgradable, allowing us to meet future upgrades to the Washoe County Regional Communication System. It should be noted that no other communication company was considered for the purchase, as the Washoe County Regional Communication System operates as an enhanced digital access communication system, which is provided by the Harris Corporation. And for the radios to work with this system, they must have the same proprietary protocols. Approximately six months ago, both fire and police recognized that this portable radio was experiencing significant failures. These failures included the failure to transmit, the failure to receive, and poor audio quality. So far, the failure rate has been approximately 20% to 25% of the total fleet. In response, these failed radios were returned to the factory for repair, almost all returned under warranty. Unfortunately, these repairs did not guarantee that continual failures would not occur, as several radios have been returned numerous times. The unreliability of these portable radios impacts both effective emergency ground operations and poses a threat to both public and personnel safety. In response to this threat, Harris was approached by Sean Taylor, the regional communications coordinator for the Washoe County Regional Communication System. He negotiated the trade and replacement program before you today. The trade in value on the old radio and the discount on the new radio effectively covers the original cost of the radio we would be returning. The new radio, the XG75, also has numerous features that meet the current and future upgrades to the Washoe County Regional Communication System. Approving this agenda item would require two separate motions. First, the approval for police and fire to purchase the equipment, and second, the approval to use contingency funding for this purchase. Chief Allen and I are ready to answer any questions that she might have.
Questions. Mr. Lawson.
Chiefs, how many radios are we talking about here?
The fire department has 83 radios, and the police department?
We have a total of 108 radios that we're gonna trade in, but through the E-91 committee, there is 37 radios that are gonna be, that were originally purchased through E-911 that are going to be utilizing this same replacement process through that program. So our total cost will be...
225 radios?
Will be less than that, because we have 108 minus 37, so about 76 from the PD, so about 150 total radios.
Okay. And is there a way, a two-year warranty on a radio that gets used 24/7/365? Doesn't seem like that long to me. Is there a way to get an extended warranty on these?
Brian Allen, police chief, for the record, just for previous one also. We are currently still negotiating with Harris or Daily Wells on the length of the warranty. The standards and the prices have been set through this negotiation through Sean Taylor. Myself and some staff from the fire department have a meeting with Daily Wells on the 18th of November to firm up the length of the negotiated warranty program.
I think we need to extend this warranty. When we're having that kind of failure after three years, that radio's not made very well. In a past life, I used to sell two-way radios too, but that just doesn't seem like it's lasting long enough for us. And I know it's proprietary, and I know we have to buy from that vendor, and, you know, all those other things. But the last part of this is, this is where, is an absolute blow to the city. And I know we have to do it, and officer safety is first and foremost, but, you know, half a million dollars at this time in the city's budget is just a killer. And we have Al Sorenson that is running over. You know, so we got great news in the last month that we get to spend an extra $750,000 we didn't budget for. So I get it, but I'd certainly like to hold their feet to the fire, to extend this warranty, at least double it to four years, you know, somewhere in there where we have some insurance. At least nothing else that'll make them build a better radio, if we don't have officers without communication, because obviously that's the most important thing when they're on the job.
And both Tom and I know full well that this is uploaded to the city's budget. We thank you for the support that you're giving our officers. Our officers recognize that this is not something that was budgeted for, that these are steps that we're taking to make sure that they remain safe, so that does not go unnoticed by our line personnel or Tom and myself. I can tell you that in my speaking with Harris Daily Wells at a recent convention, the programming and the style of this radio is off of a new technology and does not rely on any of the components of the P-27200 series. So we're hoping that it is a better product that will last, and I will do my best to negotiate the best we can.
And if not, make sure Dan Maron shows up. He's big and scary-looking.
Ms. Bybee.
My concern also, obviously, with that large of an expenditure, it's something necessary, but as I read through this, and we are really kind of stuck, because we have to go, you know, with Daily Wells. It's the only one that produces this radio. I understand that. Do we have any indication of the performance? How new are these radios or other law enforcement or fire are using them? And do we have any indication of what kind of quality product this new radio might be compared to the other one, which obviously was not, you know, that high a quality? That's...
There are some indicators that this radio is a much better product than the previous model that we purchased. The sheriff's department, and I think Reno Police Department are currently buying this radio. And this model, 7200, this wasn't a Washoe regional thing, this was a national thing. And a lot of people are replacing the radio, going to this new XG75. And so far, all the reports that we've got, most people are pleased with the product.
Okay, and it does just come with the two-year warranty like the old one did, or that's negotiable?
As of right now, as it is written, it is the two-year warranty. That is still in negotiations. Hopefully, on the 18th, I'll have a better answer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is more with finances, because I see that there is two parts to this. Radios, and there's no question, we have to buy the radios. There are no choices there, so we have to spend the money on it. My second comes question is to make sure everybody's fully aware that this is not an impact of this year's budget. This is a budget that you, this is an impact of next year's budget, because it's being pulled from a contingency fund. We're a million dollars in contingency fund, right, Jeff? And when was the last time we actually have touched the contingency fund?
It's been a while. I think 07...
I think the flood, we had the last flood is the time we sold. With contingency funds item, that has no impact on your budget today, because the funds are already budgeted there. Where the impact comes into is next year, so when you have to replace this $444,000 or reduce your contingency fund by the same amount that you're doing right now. So there is no impact to the city budget this year. The impact is next year. So that's where, you know, we're already being told, we've got to come up with more money for next year or raise taxes again for next year. This puts another really bite on us. Whatever we can do to go ahead and ensure these things to a better life would be appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Two motions. We need one first to approve the purchase, is that correct, chiefs?
That's how I understand it, Mayor.
We need a motion to purchase, approve the purchase?
The name's...
Anyone?
Then they came on. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Charlene, go ahead. Ms. Bybee, I'm sorry.
I move to approve the fire and police departments to purchase portable radios from Daily Wells Communication, Inc., and accessory equipment from other vendors in the total combined amount of $444,703.70.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the purchase of the radios. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Okay, now for, to take this from the contingency fund, Ms. Ratty.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that motion, and I did want to note that we are very responsible about using the contingency fund. This is an exceptional thing, doesn't happen very often. But in this case, I think it does make sense. I move to approve the use of the general fund contingency budget to purchase portable radios to be used by the police and fire departments for public safety purposes by transferring budget appropriations totaling $444,703.70 to the appropriate expenditure accounts as recommended by the city manager.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the contingency fund for purchase of the radios. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Okay, 9.4, presentation, discussion, and possible approval of the city of Sparks strategic plan for fiscal years 2016 through 2021. Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record. Item 9.4 is a continuation of a discussion that the council had last month on the strategic plan. This council looks at their strategic plan on an annual basis, takes that into effect of the future operational needs of the city, and it looks at things that we need to be thinking about for our future. This document's been very critical over the last several years, especially as we went through the economic downturn. So under your direction from previous years, we have a five-year plan that has stated strategic goals and stated citywide objectives. Your staff got together in the May timeframe to talk about all the discussion the council had and direction that we received on other issues, and we came up with a new plan, slightly different in some of the details, but not necessarily in the construction of the plan itself. In your workshop, you provided numerous direction to your staff from the standpoint of some very specific things, and then also in discussion of some of the language. Your staff met on the 28th of August or October, after the workshop on the 20th. We took under consideration the direction that was given in your workshop, and so the document that's in front of you, the six pages, it has taken and changed some of the language and changed some of the objectives to meet the direction that was provided on the 20th. So with that, I'm prepared to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Driscoll. Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve the city of Sparks strategic plan for fiscal year 2015 through 2021.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 9.4 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I would like to thank the senior staff team and their team of managers that have been working on this since May. It's been a lot of management work done, a lot of good conversation back and forth, and the focus at all times was on the policies and procedures of the council. So I just wanted to thank them publicly for the amount of work that they did in coming up with this final document. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, staff. Great job. 9.5 is a first reading.
Bill number 2688, an ordinance amending chapter 2 of the Sparks Municipal Code by adding and adopting a civil citation in administrative code enforcement process, providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for bill number 2688. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, November 24th, 2014. Comments on agenda 9.5? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity at a meeting today to talk to staff about this item. Why, it's been an item that's been a long time coming in front of the council, and I think that there's a portion of this that I would like to go ahead and hold on to second reading until the staff has to, can get a chance to sit down and address the issue. And the issue comes out to policies and procedures for code enforcement. For 14 years, I've asked the question to be able to get a copy of the policy procedures on code enforcement. And in 14 years, I still don't have it on the desk, because there is not one. There is no policies and procedures for code enforcement. The under, you know, we can find out what the undercurrent is, that, you know, that if you own land in the state of Nevada... if you own land in the state of Nevada and you live in the state of Nevada, you get one set of policies. If you own land in the state of Nevada and you live outside the state of Nevada, you get another set of policies. All unwritten, all just based upon habits and things we're doing. The teeth that we're doing here on this is going to put us in front of judges and things and administrative officers and stuff in court rulings, and I would strongly, strongly suggest that before we go to the point of actually happening in ordinance done where we have administrative officers, that we have documentation on how we're going to address these issues, the procedures that if a citizen calls on up and says, "What are the steps that are taken for this issue?", they have the right to have that in writing, to go ahead and say, "This is the steps that are going to be taken and when they're going to occur." And one of the issues that I brought forward, what are the policies, changes that we can expect? One is that if you own, if you live in the piece of real estate that you're, that the complaint comes, it will be different than if you are an absentee owner of that real estate. And I think that should be in a policy format where everybody is aware that those things are coming on up, just not on a hearsay or as a matter-of-fact item. So, you know, I've talked to staff about it. I don't know how long it will take for them to sit down and write. I know the attorney that's handling it said he would start reviewing things today to see how the police department handled complaints and what their policies and procedures are, and see if we can get something in place so the citizens know what to expect out of this. That's all that is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, Steve, we can postpone this for a while until you get something back to us, or do we need to open it up again on the 24th and continue it?
It's my understanding that with a change in direction, that we would go back with council's approval on that direction, that we would go back, we would hit the items that were, are being asked for us to address, we would go through and address those, we would work with the attorney's office to make sure that we stay within the boundaries. Code enforcement always has a couple of issues, constitutional issues from those, so we make sure that we write the rules accordingly. And then, once we're ready and we've vetted that properly and had some discussions and/or even the possibility of a workshop with the council to get down to some of the details, then putting it back on, we would start over with a first reading.
Okay.
And then, we go back to a second after that.
Okay.
So, if it's the council's direction for us to do that, we'll be more than happy to take that.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. No, we don't really need a motion. I think just direction is what you need, right?
Direction is, second, and I've made notes and I'll follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have...
Whoops.
So, I guess my question is, so I'm not 100% clear of what council management is asking for, and I'm okay with that. What I really want to know is, is the city attorney's office and staff clear about what council management is asking for? Because I do think in all of the work that we did on the preservation, neighborhood preservation codes, the most significant change is taking them from being a criminal penalty, which we would never pursue, and so therefore, no penalty really whatsoever, to a civil penalty. This is how you actually get the action that we're looking for, based on all that work. And so, I just don't want it to drag out for too much longer, because I do think it's a necessary tool. I believe the preservation code's become effective January 1. Is that correct?
Yep.
And so, really, I just want to make sure that both the city attorney's office and staff have clarity about what it is that we're looking for. And I'm not sure that I'm looking for, I'll leave it to your judgment, but I'm not sure that I'm looking for a workshop, because it feels like, feels like factor, and maybe I'm wrong here, that we're getting, that we're moving off of governance into implementation. And really, it's the staff that has to implement it. So, I'm not sure that we'd need a full workshop with our input about how it should be, our input on implementation, that's the staff's job, but to have policies written that we're signing off on makes some sense to me. So, really, do you have the direction that you need?
I believe I do. There's some notes from a meeting from earlier today, and this is some of the, it's similar to some of the discussion here. If I have any other discussion points or if I'm not clear on something, I would obviously have the freedom to chat with Mr. Schmidt directly, and if I thought that there were other questions, I would bring that to the mayor and we'd drive it sales forward. And my suggestion on a workshop was just providing you flow of options.
Sure.
But we'll take a look at what we run with and be back. And we know that we have a January deadline for implementing our preservation code changes, and so we want to make this happen as quickly as possible. This will not languish.
And just to be clear, council management, you're not looking for specific policies and procedures, you are just looking that policies and procedures exist?
That's correct. I mean, I would like to, that if I received a call tonight about this item, that I would have something that I could refer that to in writing in the city, that this is the way we do code enforcement. And I think that a citizen has that right to do, it's not even written down anywhere, that there's a 10-day period from a date of a letter to the date of action.
Okay.
I believe that should be more available to the citizens if they know what the procedures are. I think it should be very well in a absentee owner, you know, that owns apartments and things like that, that they have a right to know what their rules they're living under versus someone who lives inside the residence that they're in. I think if we're going to have those distinguished, and we already have, staff said this is the way we're going to handle things, I think we should know that, so that property owners, whoever's called me on up, I have to ask the question, "Do you live in your house? You've got one set of rules. If you don't live in your house, if you own a piece of property, it's another set of rules." And we should know that, as well as the citizens should know that. So, that's the kind of what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for another workshop for it to answer your question. I don't think it has to be that entailed, but I do think there has to be some documentations of how we're going to deal with this stuff.
If I could ask...
Mr. Lawson? It occurs to me that you're not going to make this...
You have some chat, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Ed, and then...
Well, I don't see how this is going to happen in two weeks. So, I mean, if we have to continue this and implement the new code in February, I'm okay with that, too. I just don't see this happening in two weeks, because we're not going to have a Christmas meeting as usual. So, that leaves us the last one in November and the first one in December.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's staff work on it, bring it back to us when they can, and let's see where it goes. Chat?
To Councilman Schmidt, is this more of a procedural overview meant to be informative for our citizenry, or are you looking for something a little more substantive, such as standard operating procedures, something that would actually impact the way we do things in the various departments, which could then create some problems with, say, discipline, issues along those lines, if people fail to comply with the SOPs?
I think that's my first item request, is that if a citizen wants to know what procedures are, they have the right to know what procedures are, what the next step is, where, how long is it going to be before they do. I think they have the right for that. And I think we have, the council has a right to know what those procedures are in writing. My second, I think, is litigation. You know, if we're in front of an appeals and we don't have policies and procedures for staff on their steps that they're supposed to take and how they're supposed to do it, and, you know, it gets to a court case, I know we're going to do things on an arbitration basis, but somebody still has a right to take it to court, and we didn't have a policies and procedures for our employees to follow, why they're doing a process, I think we opened ourselves on up to issues, so...
So, I can, I can understand, you know, from a civil rights aspect, failure to train, failure to supervise, taking of property, what is your policy practice and procedure that would create some liability for the city in that regard? And in that aspect, then we are looking at SOPs. If we are looking for something that a little more of an overview procedurally, so we can tell our constituents, "This is what you can expect in these different circumstances", then that shouldn't be that hard, it's more of an outline.
I agree.
But I think what you're looking for, though, from a legal standpoint, can be pretty substantial. I don't know if we can do that in two weeks or two months or six months.
For the record, Neil Cruz, deputy city manager for community services. I think it's going to take us, taking this thing in steps, some time to put our hands around what it is that we want to bring back for you to consider, and then a schedule for how that would go forward. And as much as our internal deadline for the next city council meeting is tomorrow, we're not going to be able to bring you back anything on the 24th of this month. So, what I would, what I would ask for is that you allow us to bring you an item at the December 10 meeting that would lay out a schedule for us to go through, the preparation of documents, an internal review process, a review process with the city council, and then based on that, you could consider, you know, any potential holding off on the new property preservation code, whether it's one month or two months or whatever that ends up being. So, you know, essentially, a month from today is when I propose that staff is back in front of you with, with an idea and a schedule.
I think that makes, that makes perfect sense. There's, we've waited until January, we can, it's not going to kill us to wait a little longer, but not a lot longer.
Understood.
All right, everyone okay with that direction? Okay. Thanks, folks, appreciate it. Planning and zoning, 11.1, discussion possible action on PCN-14036. Bill Number 2687, An Ordinance to Rezone From A40 Agriculture to NUD New Urban Development On A Site Totalling Approximately 5.1 Acres, Located At 6300 David Allen Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, And Other Matters Properly Relating There To. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council. I'm Karen Melby, I'm senior planner. Before you today is a request to rezone a property, which you can see on the exhibit here is in green. It's five acres, and we are requesting to rezone it from A40 Agricultural District to New Urban District. In order for them to do any development on this project or property, they would have to have a plan development handbook approved by city council. Staff is recommending and planning commission recommends approval of this. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Melby? Okay, seeing none, this is a public, whoops, Mr. Lawson, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I was agreeing, I forgot about public hearing.
This is a public hearing, so open to public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Come on down. Welcome, say, how are you?
Good. Thank you. For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and this is kind of the next step in the process. You already approved a master plan amendment to change the designation on the site to mixed use, and then this is the zone change, and then the next step will be a development handbook that we'll be submitting shortly to the city and bringing back.
Question, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melissa, so my understanding with this, there's no projects associated with this yet, this is just to do this, to get it into the handbook?
Correct, and then it'll be incorporated into a handbook and brought before you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve Bill Number 2687, A Rezone Request Associated With PCN-14036, Based on Finding Z1 Through Z3, And the Fact Supporting These Findings As Set For in the Staff Report.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Councilwoman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve 11.11, or 11.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Closed-door session, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
Comments from the public? Anyone want to speak on the comments from the public? Comments from the city council and the city manager?
Public...
Oops, sorry, come on up. And if you would, sir, when you're done, if you would fill out one of these comment cards and give it to our clerk, please.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Shane Johnson, Shane Johnson, for the record. By my background, I have, I'm a resident of Washoe County, undergraduate degree in neuroscience, graduated from Stanford University School of Medicine, and have worked my whole career as an entrepreneur. I'm actually here not, I don't think I'll come up with anything out of this, but my group applied for a medical marijuana dispensary license in the city of Sparks. We placed fourth in the rankings, and my understanding is that two highly qualified local groups are ahead of us in those rankings. There is a group in second place that's from out of state, and I'm here to talk to you today or ask you to consider exercising your right as a local jurisdiction to work with local entrepreneurs, because as an entrepreneur, I feel that's important. When deciding what medical marijuana entities would best serve the citizens of the city of Sparks and be the best community partners, I want to ask you to support northern Nevada business owners. There is ample precedence from elsewhere in the state that you can and should play an active role in deciding what medical marijuana entities participate in this community. This group that is currently in place to receive a dispensary, they don't live here, they're unlikely to have the same patient-centric outlook, they don't share an innate sense of community responsibility and partnership, and they don't spend their money here. You have the authority to maintain the power of choice within the city of Sparks and to influence who is operating within this jurisdiction. Senator Tick Segalblum, who helped craft NRS 453A, has stated that the legislative intent of the law was for Nevada-owned businesses to play a central role, which may include leveraging the expertise of out-of-state operators, but does not imply permission for them to move in and dominate the local landscape. Somehow, the division of public and behavioral health got this wrong. Statewide, a significant number of provisional licenses were awarded to out-of-state groups with no ties to our communities. The state completed its vetting and ranking process, and it is now up to each jurisdiction to ensure that they take care of their own interests. Based on statute, there is a clear process by which, by which if you reject a particular applicant, the state will then simply award that provisional license to the next highest applicant on the list. If the city of Sparks does not revisit this now, Sparks and its citizens will be exposed to out-of-state entities with no ties to this community. Thank you.
You know, for me, straight off the top, I think we made it pretty clear as a council where this was going. We put it in the hands of the state for them to approve or disapprove of whoever they wanted and to rank them, to send them to us, and we would take their rankings and run with them. Being from out of state is not one of the reasons to turn them down, as far as I'm concerned. That's the way the council wanted to do this, that's the way we decided that, because we did not want to get hammered on from everybody, our friends on this side and their friends on this side, we didn't want to get hammered on because we didn't get a license, or he didn't get a license, or she didn't get a license. So, for me, you need to talk to the state and have them squared away.
Absolutely.
We're going to review those guys. If they qualify, they're in. If they don't qualify, we'll go to the next one. Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is that that's totally different information that you're giving than I've been told, that we don't have that right to disqualify anybody on the list. So, if you have other information of the statute, I would suggest that you can get it to our city attorney to get it to us, because I'm being told that that's not the option, that the rankings came out from the state, that's the way they did it, that's the way it goes, that, you know, that all of Las Vegas, when they did all their rankings, were totally off the books, they couldn't, they can't, they can't do that. So, I'm, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I agree with going local, but I can't go against the law.
Absolutely understand and respect all of everything you're saying.
Yeah, I think we can turn them down if their, if their spot they want to do it in is wrong, if it doesn't meet our codes or zoning or whatever, but other than that, there's not many things we can do. Mr. Lawson?
And this is just one more step in the controversy that's medical marijuana.
Yeah.
And I've heard both sides, and I've actually asked for a ruling to, one way or the other. Do we really have a choice, or do we have to stick with the state? And it depends, we get two lawyers in a room and we've got four opinions. So, we're, we're going to continue to research this on our end to make the best choice, but I understand it, the way Gino understands it, is we got one and two, and that's who we're stuck with. But hopefully, that's not correct.
As I said, I don't think I have a dog in this particular fight in the city of Sparks. I just believe strongly in local supporting local.
And as, as do we. I mean, obviously, the people that come to us in this room and, and ask for things, and we work with to build the city of Sparks, those are the folks that we owe our allegiance to. But at the same time, we can't do anything outside the law. So, we've got to figure out what, what the law is, and we'll react accordingly.
Okay, anyone else, a public comment? Comments from the public, comments from the city council or city manager? Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of announcements. Terms will expire for the following committees on December, December of 2014. The Sparks Planning Commission, two members for four-year terms. The Airport Noise Authority Committee, one member, a two-year term. The Washoe County District Board of Health, the applicant must be a physician licensed to practice within the state of Nevada, and that's one member for a four-year term. Person...
Go ahead.
Does not have to be licensed as a physician in the state of Nevada. Didn't we have, I believe we had this conversation the last time?
You're right, and I did not change my... I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Moving along what they need to do, if they're so interested. The person's interested in serving on any of these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on... Click on City Services on the webpage, and then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you can fill out, you can click on and fill out the City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted for these three different committees until November 28, 2014.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none for the business, we're adjourned. Good job, dear. You're well on your way.